They could refi, but when they're separate buildings. They can look at that as separate filings.
We're gonna have time to come.
So we'll just mention. Someone else on. Buy down.
Sounds like great cloud. Okay, so, yeah, no, that sounds good.
Amazon. Absolutely. Yeah, that I don't do is put on my.
Oh. Now, now, you've got to give us the last century. We ain't Fred Bullard.
No, I get somebody else. I just pay them red and check and they put it on their own credit cards. Put it in.
As long as they have a little bit of cash on there.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Yeah, let's say.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully Richard turns up. Girls may be. Sound just fine. Yeah, I've worked.
You don't very much.
I'll share on the bookcase. Do you want to sit here at this table? You certainly can.
Yeah.
Sure. Grab the chair.
There he is. Through the frozen thunder.
Yeah.
And it's been around two days in Chicago. Thursday, Friday, rain, forty-five degrees. One downtown. It's pretty. Eight, fifteen hours. Just said it was all that. Something, but then I'll send you out.
Yeah.
I'll see, I'll see. Oh, okay. I'm doing pretty good.
I'm here.
Okay. It being seven o'clock and everyone present, we file the January twelfth, twenty sixteen council meeting order. All council members present. Also, Andy Aron, Randy Riggs, President Lawson. Uh, just comments. Anyone like to address the council on anything not on the step up to the podiums? State your name for the audience and.
My name is Wayne Medfran. I'm a new resident here. Over at four eighteen Gunderson Boulevard. And I'm a member of American Legion Coast seventy-eight. And that's the reason why I'm here. As you all know, it comes up here shortly. American Legion's, uh, annual half and turkey dinner will be held, uh, January thirtieth. It's kind of a street. And, uh, we'd like to invite each of the council members to please come to it. Uh, this is a wonderful, uh, event. And then we, this provides the funds for the American Legion Youth Baseball Program. It also provides other money for other things that this organization does. The American Legion in this town has been in business since nineteen nineteen. Probably long before, I hope so, before you. And, um, we'll be celebrating a hundred years of service to the community in just a few years. So we're asking that if you have this place in the city hall, uh, where others can see it and ask each of the gentlemen and ladies to consider coming to this event. The month is a, the money you have, basically the donation to support the good things that the American Legion does.
How many times is this?
It's at the third. Okay.
Or seven.
Sure. It starts from five till eight P M. Okay. Uh, there is takeout. I don't know if you want to, you can call for that. Uh, have as much as you want, although these days they don't recommend eat as much as you want. And the food is phenomenally good. So we really would like to support the people. You're all leaders in the community. And what the mayor does, help the people like this must be a good thing. And they would like very much to see you there. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, I can take that.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no one else, then we move on to, uh, additions or corrections to the agenda. Uh, you know, there's one item that we should move around.
Waste management licenses are normal.
Yeah, no, or should we just, uh, move all those?
Well, I think just pull waste management off of the initial approval. In other words, go ahead and, you know, approve or take action on the rest of the licenses. And then pull them off and then we'll talk about that under.
Under new business.
Yes.
Anything else? And that says we have a motion to accept the agenda as an ending.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as printed.
And I will make that motion.
Motioning. We consented.
Thank you. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Moving right along.
Yeah.
We have no presentations and public hearings. So we would go on to engineering then. And Joe, first week reconstruction project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council in your packets, you've got a memo that I prepared regarding the project along with some attachments. Uh, the attachments include a partial plan set for the improvement project along with the current cost estimate and a draft advertisement for bids that would be published in the local newspaper, if you so authorize, at the end of the, uh, discussion this evening. I'll take a couple of minutes and go through each one of the items, uh, to review with you and then we can discuss, uh, the recommended actions, uh, for each item. The draft plan set, uh, has been prepared consistent with the feasibility report. If you recall, we had the feasibility report that, uh, was prepared in November and we held a public hearing on that at the last meeting in December and you had ordered the project based on the feasibility report. So the plans have been prepared consistent with, uh, the direction from the city council. Um, you might recall that in the feasibility report, we had identified some potential optional improvements. And your direction, uh, based on our understanding of your direction from the last meeting, the only one of those you wanted to include in the project was the sidewalk extension on the north side of First Street from Spring Street to Depot Park. And that was to be set up as an alternate for, to the base bid. So we did, uh, prepare plans that way. None of the other optional improvements from the feasibility report were included in the plans. Um, one of the change plans, um, when we had discussions with Randy, the superintendent from K M U, he indicated that, uh, they would take care of the hydrant at the intersection of First Street and Spring Street themselves. And he asked that we remove that from the construction plans, so we did, uh, make that change as well. So the full plan set is thirty-two pages long. Uh, I've got a full set with me here. Uh, the administrator also has a full set and full sets have been provided to the Public Works Superintendent and the K M U Superintendent. Also, they're available to review if you'd like. Um, we pulled up representative eleven pages from the plan set to include in the packet tonight that show the, the primary, uh, activities that would be performed under the project. Um, so that plan set is, is ready for your consideration of approval and moving forward. Um, the engineer's estimate that has been prepared on the draft plan set is included, uh, with our memo. On page two of the memo, we, we put together a sun chart that compares the cost by part with the construction costs that were estimated in the feasibility report. And if you'll notice, each of the, the costs are relatively close to the feasibility report. The water system is down a little bit. That's because of the removal of that hydrant. But overall, the base bid work, which includes a sanitary sewer, the water system, the storm sewer and the streets, uh, the current draft plan estimate is five hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars. And that's about twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars less than the, uh, construction cost that was estimated in the feasibility report. So that's a, a decrease of about four point two percent. So the costs tracking with the plans right now are tracking very well with the feasibility report and are, are slightly under. So that's, that's good. That's the direction we want them to go. Um, so we feel that the cost estimates is, is right in line with the feasibility report. And that minor difference is due to, as we finalize the plans, um, the, the quantities of some of the items. We refine them and so they'll change a little bit from what they were in the report. And then we, we go through and we, we fine tune some of the unit prices we use for the, uh, cost estimates. So that would account for that minor variation of the four point two percent that you'll see between the feasibility report estimate and the current estimate. Um, regarding the, the draft advertisement for bid, we did include that as well with the memo. You'll see it identifies the time and date to be, uh, for the bids to be opened and also the location for the bids to be opened. And we want to make sure that, that we get direction from you on, on those two items, uh, if you approve the ad for bid. Right now, we're, we would recommend that we open bids here at City Hall. That's typically how we would do it. So we've got that identified in the, uh, the ad for bid as the, the place of the bid opening. And the recommended date, time and date that we're, uh, got for the bid opening would be two P M on Thursday, February twenty-fifth. Uh, other components of the ad for bid, it, it shows a brief description of the work so the contractors that see this ad in the newspaper can identify what types of work it involves and, and if it's the type of work that their company would be interested in performing. Um, then it gives them directions on how to obtain the bid documents and, and, uh, some of the things they have to include with their bid. So this ad would be published, um, based on our recommendation to be published in the Canyon Leader on February third. We'd also publish it in a, in a industry trade journal, the Finance and Commerce, on both February third and February tenth. And we also post it electronically on the contractor's, um, basically their, their trade website where a lot of the projects are posted electronically for their.
I would just give you the twenty-one days to.
Correct, yeah. We could, we could advertise earlier, if you'd like. We're required by law because the process, the project is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, we're required to have a full twenty-one day advertising period.
Any reason, any reason why we can't?
Well, no, we certainly could.
I'd say being a family should be ads out as early as possible.
So we could advertise it one week earlier, which would be, I'd have to look at the date, but, uh. So that would be rather than February third, it would publish on January twenty-seventh. So we could certainly publish in the, in the Canyon Leader on January twenty-seventh.
Absolutely. I would say that would, everything else sounds fine, but getting the bids out as early as possible.
Okay.
Possibly more interest and hopefully a better price.
So we'll move those dates up. Canyon Leader on the January twenty-seventh, the Finance and Commerce Trade Journal, January twenty-seventh and February third. Excuse me, and then.
Also would give the interested parties a little more time to prepare their bids.
Correct.
Sharpen their pencils a little bit, we hope.
Correct. Okay. Um, but as far as the time and date of opening, two P M on the twenty-fifth? That seems fine.
I forget the hot one.
Okay. And, and opening here at City Hall?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I would be present for the opening and typically myself and the administrator would, would handle it. We just need two people, one to open and one to witness. All right, very good. We've got those details ironed out. Um, then that brings us to the project schedule. So based on the, the memo, this is, the schedule is consistent with what we had in the feasibility report. Uh, we'd be approving plans here tonight. Uh, we'd be setting, setting the time and date for the bid opening and authorizing publishing of the advertisement. February twenty-fifth, we would open the bids. We would get those compiled and bring them back to you at your regular meeting on March eighth for consideration of award. Assuming the contract gets awarded, we'll work with the contractor then to get the contracts executed, get all necessary permits and things in place. And then we'll be ready to start construction when the frost comes out of the ground typically in the first part of May. And then we would still target that substantial completion for the end of July. So we're good, uh, of the two or three weeks before Rosefest.
Uh, speaking of that on Rosefest, there's one thing that, uh, I'm not certain is going to happen, but I know, uh, Mendon has been down doing some bore sampling on, uh, the bridge down on fifty-sixth and sixty. I don't know what they're going to do, meaning for traffic wise. So I hate to see a real situation turn up over Rosefest that we have to bring that traffic out.
I would too, but we really have no control over that.
But I mean, make the contractor aware of that, that there could be a problem that weekend in particular. That's all that I hope, yeah.
Well, if you're talking that, that, that weekend would be during Rosefest, our factor should be done now.
Well, we're hoping, but I mean, sometimes we don't. I'm just looking at it to cover our end of it, so.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
Okay. Here.
I just, Joe, what was the, the reason there's a fifteen percent increase in the storm sewer part?
You know, I'd have to go back and look at the, uh, I should have answered for you to apologize. Um, I think some of the, uh, the pipe lengths changed where we actually were locating the catch basins. We shifted them a little farther backs from the, uh, radio of the curves, which extended.
Lions.
Yeah, to get them out of those, those ramps and that extended the pipe lengths a little bit.
Oh, okay.
And then the, the alternate bid for the sidewalk, you can see the estimate there went up by about sixteen hundred dollars. That was when we did the feasibility report, we estimated the sidewalk and what we, what we didn't take into account was that sidewalk would cross two driveways and also an alley. And so we'd have to thicken up the concrete at each of those crossings. And so we, uh, accounted for that increased thickness of the concrete at those spots that.
Because of the vehicular.
Right, to get, yeah, yeah, to get the vehicular way to cross that sidewalk. So that accounted for that extra sixteen hundred and fifty dollars on that estimated.
And it is an alternate.
That is an alternate, correct. Yeah. So if the council is interested in, in moving forward with the project, the, the, uh, there is a resolution that's included in your packet tonight. It's, uh, after the, the plan set, it's resolution, uh, two zero one six dash zero four. And the resolution, uh, approves the plan specifications, authorizing calling for the bids. Um, we would publish the bid based on the direction you gave us tonight, modifying those, those publication dates. Um, and really in your motion, yeah, as long as you just specify that time and date of the bid opening and authorize publication after the resolution, we should be set to go.
Well, I'll start it off by making a motion that we approve resolution twenty sixteen dash zero four. Second. On favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, I'll do it on the Friday all right, Jack.
Uh, talking with the architect, they've been continuing to refine their layout for the, the building. And then the primary thing they've been working on since the authorization is starting to work with the mechanical and electrical and the structural, um, components of the building. They're starting to get their subcontractors involved with laying out the mechanical system, electrical system and the structural system. Um, right now, based on the schedule, uh, they are scheduling a review meeting. They're, they're targeting the February ninth, which is the date of your next, where your council meeting. They, they're hoping to get a, a client review meeting scheduled for that day.
February eighth, isn't it? Oh, that's it.
February eighth.
Is it the eighth?
I believe Tuesday's, uh.
February ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're targeting, and they're, they're calling it a fifty percent review meeting.
Correct.
Where they would come, review the status of the drawings, get feedback on it. They also would talk with you about, um, some of the options for selections of some of the interior finishes, you know, colors and, and fabrics and, and carpet and, uh, those types of things. So things are progressing well. Uh, they're, they're still targeting, um, having, uh, complete plans ready for review with the city by the end of February. So then we can get them finalized in March and, and, uh, have the plans ready for advertising. And assuming that the, um, the financing component with the USDA application falls into line with that, then we'd still be targeting a bid date in the second half of April.
And you're talking, having that as a part of the regular meeting, not as a special meeting before or?
I, I, well, we'll have to work, work it out with the, uh, we'll have to coordinate with the administrator, but we'd probably want to do a review meeting, I think, probably separate from your regular meeting.
Maybe beforehand.
Yeah. Maybe like an hour long work session beforehand or something like that.
Works real well when we do them like at six. The same night.
Right. Yeah. Probably an hour would be enough.
I would think so. So that's, that's the schedule that's laid out right now. So roughly a fifty percent review meeting with the council in February and then getting to the, the ninety and one hundred percent plans by, by, uh, early March. And still targeting that, that bid date in the second half of April.
Sounds good. Glad to see this project moving forward and milestones coming up are being passed by and moving on toward the next one.
And I will give you an update too, uh, since I mentioned it, um, here just a second ago is, uh, we are working on the, uh, funding applications for USDA, the world development. Uh, the stage one application was completed, uh, back at the time we were working on schematic design. And now that we're into final design, we're working on what's called the stage two other application. And there's about two dozen forms and documents that we've got to pull together. Some are simple, you know, sign off on a form and send it back in. Other ones are, you, we have to pull some information together for their review. Uh, but we're working with the administrator to get those pulled together and, um, we're targeting to have all those done by early February as well. And, uh, we've, conference call with, with Lori Bellata, the R D representative of Faribault, and, and she's saying that right now the schedule should work out to where our bid date of April should be able to happen, uh, if everything falls into place that we were anticipating.
Sound good. Is that it?
Has it?
Well, then we can move on to legal. And first is item A, twenty sixteen appointments and destinations. And, uh, all of that, I haven't kind of approved, have one motion. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And, uh, the resolution twenty sixteen dash zero one establishing legal fees and compensation. And B, if anyone have any issue with that, or do we have a motion to approve that?
And, uh, so it looks like the only two things, fire call and extraordinary time and equipment, the only things that have changed. I make out a motion and it's the, uh, the resolution twenty sixteen dash zero one.
Is that second now? I got time. You're up to tell us first. I'll let John have it. Okay, I'll join that one. Pretty much a dead heat, but I think I was just a, a mill second passing. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Um, the F W annual dance permit. And as you get. Okay. And the F W annual dance permit. Refuse and recycling licenses with the exception of the waste management contract, we move down to new business. And the annual sidewalk, sidewalk obstruction licenses. And those can all be approved as one motion.
So moved.
Was that the now one? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are making great progress here. Now we come to the hard part.
Uh-huh. That's what I was waiting for.
Kennedy and Gravens. Twenty sixteen exorbitant rates for legal services. Three dollars an hour.
Can't you take the safe time?
No.
Well, not many.
But the poor man.
Just percentage is a pretty small increase.
Yeah, that's the idea again. Mark, well, Mark pointed that out. I mean, that's really what it is. It's, it's supposed to be a small percentage.
Yes. And it is that. And, uh, the L T D broadband water tower lease agreement, uh, we don't, we haven't heard anything.
No, I was just too. With you guys, don't, don't anymore.
I, I, I didn't, and that's why I wanted to make sure you knew I had Bob looking at it for like five minutes and say.
Fine, no.
He goes, yeah, there's probably some issues and that's why I sent you.
Yeah.
Just so you were aware of that in case they brought something in.
And I wasn't aware of the sixty day language that somebody wrote on the top there.
Yeah, it was really strange.
You know, that's interesting. I mean, if you're going to construct a tower, that's one thing, but basing, based on existing tower.
That's why it didn't quite make sense.
No.
That was the reason for the. Okay.
So, uh, you'll probably have to table that. And the following item, the resolution to approve that. So actually it'd just be, this motion would be just to approve. So actually it'd just be, this motion would be just to approve the three dollar rating.
Now, can you pay that in cash once?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're all.
Everybody got to do it, I must want to.
I didn't have a hole under the table.
Don't worry, Scott. We haven't asked for anything else, you know, by call here, though. Well. I'll make the motion to approve the rating.
I will second that money deserved increase.
On favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We had to make it pay.
Oh, I know, I know.
Looks like he's been out in the sun.
Yeah, I'm getting ready. So it's the lawyers that are getting the increases. We have our other guy that's asking for one.
Okay. So. In case we can move on to item ten, old business, fire hall financing. And we have a guest here to lead us through the jungle of financial terms.
George Ielison from Northland Securities.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And I believe that there'll be a overhead popping up here in a moment. So there. I was with you back in November and at that time, we presented some numbers similar to this in regards to how to put the financing package together for your, for your fire hall project. And tonight, there's just a couple of things that I want to hit a couple of key points on. And as Joe indicated, the application process is going well. There's a couple of bits of information that I will hold in mind to get that process moving forward. So I'll be working with them as well. But, and I understand your project is, is not narrowed down yet. Of course, you hope for favorable construction and that the project comes in less than we anticipated. But I guess two key things that I wanted to talk about tonight. One is what's called interim interest. That's a new line item showing up on the schedule. And the second point that I was just going to talk about is, is the existing bonds on this facility, the two thousand and seven bonds for the city hall refinance. The USDA interim interest, which, let me see.
Is that the right schedule order, if you want?
Actually, yes, this one, Mark, would be perfect. Up towards the top, there's a line item where it says USDA interim interest during construction. Based upon a roughly two point seven million dollar project, that's approximately thirty one thousand dollars. And then when the project size gets a little bit bigger, it's estimated to be another thousand dollars up to thirty two thousand dollars. So that's something that with USDA's financing, they, and it's all going well according to USDA in terms of, of getting the financing package put together. Again, very favorable rates and terms with them, three and five eighths percent fixed for up to forty years. That's, that's a very favorable financing package. But what they do is they'll, they'll allocate or earmark money for you, but not provide it to you when, when you're constructing the project. What you need to do is go out and get short-term construction financing. And basically use that source of funding to pay the construction bills, the professional costs, the architect ending hearing, as well as the construction costs. During the construction period, when your project is complete, then they'll provide you the long-term financing. So that long-term financing pays off the short-term construction debt. So that's what I'm referring to when I have a line item up there for thirty one thousand. That's the cost of putting that financing into place and then the interest cost on the money during the construction period. So that's not out of pocket for the city. You can roll that right into your long-term financing. It just increases the overall financing by that amount. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Definitely is out of pocket, just not immediately.
That's true. Good point, Mayor. The, and what we'll be doing is, of course, with your direction, is the interim financing is not needed until you've got your project costs identified, you bid your project, and then you're ready to incur project expenses. So according to, to Joe's schedule, that may be sometime in the May. Late April, you'll know your construction bids, probably start construction, I would imagine, in May, in May or June. Okay, May or June. So, so right around May, June is when we would kind of guide the city through that process of getting that short-term financing in place. So if we've got somebody who can talk well on the phone, and this project is only going to be a month and a half or two, then we could conceivably put everybody off for that two months and forego that thirty one thousand. Well, that's one strategy, that's.
Another one.
Yeah. The likely, but I, and then Joe maybe can speak to when the project would be complete. I would imagine that you're getting more towards the end of the calendar year.
I, I think the initial estimate is probably a six to eight month construction period.
Okay. So in all likelihood, I don't know if contractors will hold off on getting paid for that long. But, but you're looking at interim financing from roughly June first till maybe January first.
Presumably that would be a higher interest rate than the long-term USDA.
Well, it, it actually should be an interest rate that's probably less than one percent. Because of the very short-term nature of, of the, of the borrowing. You'd be looking at issuance of general obligation bonds. And by virtue of that, in a, in a financing term that's less than one year, short-term interest rates, even with the Fed looking at some short-term adjustments, is still roughly right around one percent or less, so. So that's a positive. Because when you convert, you're at three and five eighths percent. So you want to hold on that one percent money, I guess, for a little bit longer. So council, at some point in the coming months, what I'll do is, is, what I mentioned to your administrator is that we would make a recommendation on how to put that interim financing into place. There, there's a couple of avenues that we can look at for that. The bottom line being trying to get that lowest interest rate at the least, you know, cost to do it certainly. So it's, it's one that certainly there'll be a phone call made to local community banks.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yep, and so certainly if there's an appetite, and, and you'd be looking at approaching two and a half to three million dollars for this short-term money. So it's, it's, and that very well could be a, a good place for it to land is, is, you know, we'll have that conversation with, with local lenders. And so again, at some point, council, I'll just, you know, ask you for a little direction on, Mayor, maybe it would just be a motion directing Northland to, to put together that short-term financing for you. That would certainly, you know, we would look at those avenues first, local lenders. And if not, the appetite there, and I can't speak to that yet, but, you know, again, try to get the lowest interest rate as we can.
Sometime after the bid openings, when we've got a good handle on.
Exactly right.
What it's going to actually be.
Correct, yep. So, and, and that's actually a, a good segue into my second point, which is once we know the finance, or not the financing cost, but rather the total cost of the fire hall project, you'll know what your long-term financing needs are under the, the type of financing that you're utilizing. We are ultimately getting long-term financing with USDA rural development. But when I was in front of you last in November, that related to a step in the process to put your general obligation pledge behind the bonds. It's a requirement of USDA that you provide your general obligation pledge of security. For a fire hall project, you can do that one of two ways. One was a community referendum, or two was the issuance of capital improvement plan bonds. You chose the latter, the capital improvement plan bonds, which worked with your administrator and putting together a capital improvement plan. You held a hearing mid-November. City council approved the resolution approving that, that capital improvement plan and the concept of issuing bonds. You then had to allow thirty days for public comment, which, which during that period, you know, certainly the public would come in, ask questions, what have you. At the end of thirty days, which was mid-December, that's the period of time that, once you, which got to that point, you don't have the ability to put your general obligation pledge into the financing arrangement of the USDA. So you're now on paper willing, or you're on paper ready to provide security to USDA in terms of your, or in the form of your US, your, your general obligation pledge, I'm sorry. So, and why I bring up the city hall financing with capital improvement plan bonds, there's a maximum principal and interest component tied to your market value of your city. And so I don't want to go into too much detail on this, but it, it takes into account existing bonds utilizing that, that statutory authority. So the refinancing of city hall was the same capital improvement authority as you will be using to finance the fire hall. So we have to take into account how much debt you have here into the equation of how much can you legally borrow. So I'll be working with city, your city administrator on the two thousand and seven bonds, just looking at, is it better to contribute a little bit of cash to buy that down? Or is it better to try to refinance those bonds to bring down the amount owed, if you will? And so that's why there's a line item or a, or a section in this, in this presentation, two thousand and seven bond amount, which is, is kind of important because we have to, that's kind of a balancing point where depending upon how large your project is for the fire hall, we may have to buy down the city hall. Again, to get to that, that magic number, if you will, of how much annually can you have for maximum principal and interest. So again, that's a percentage of your market value. But there's no action necessary by the city council tonight. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that again, if, if the bids are aggressive on the construction of the fire hall, it's less of a need to worry about the existing two thousand and seven bonds. So again, I'll be reporting back to you on that. I just wanted to bring it up a little bit tonight and certainly see if you had any questions on that. Otherwise, Mayor and council will keep working with Bolton and Mink on getting stage two paperwork done. And then certainly be in touch with, with, or keeping a close eye on construction.
I guess I've got one question, which I'm sure you can't answer right now. But how do you determine that, what that amount is, the, the maximum?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same.
Principal and interest.
Sure. Well, it's either.
A moving target that.
No, it, it's, it's a percentage of your overall market value. So I've got that number here.
Yes.
And if I had my cheaters on, I could read this better. But it's, it's your estimated market value, which in, in pay two thousand and fifteen was just shy of ninety million dollars. So that's the estimated market value of all taxable property in the city.
And that's set by the county.
That's correct, yeah, set by the county. And so your maximum principal and interest is point one six percent, which is roughly a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. Now, now that's a hundred and forty three thousand dollars. We have to stay at or below with the financing components that relate. And then, Mark, can I move this up just a little bit? So a hundred and forty three thousand dollars, that would be for, the USDA has two financing pools of money that we're looking to utilize. One is the first four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you don't need that general obligation pledge for. It's called a note and mortgage program. Exact same, it looks exactly the same. I mean, the same three and five eighths, same forty-year financing term, but you don't need to provide a general obligation pledge. So that doesn't count into that formula. We, that's outside of the maximum manual principal. So we, we care then about the other amount of the fire hall financing beyond four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you're at a three million dollar project, just for numbers, you would be roughly at two and a half million dollars. That counts towards this four million, counts towards that a hundred and forty three thousand. And then why I brought up city hall, that counts because it's capital improvement plan bonds. Existing maximum principal and interest on those bonds is about eighty eight thousand dollars per year. So if I take that eighty eight thousand and subtract that from the a hundred and forty three thousand, that's your maximum, we wouldn't be able to support the entire fire hall project. So that's where we, we just either refinance city hall or buy the debt down a little bit, so.
Just to get under it.
Right, you're, you're, you're close. I mean, it's one of those that with, and, and I'm not, I can't point and reference a number on the screen here that says, you know, I, I should probably have that hand up for you, but it's, again, it's roughly a hundred and forty five thousand dollars is what we can have as a maximum. And then we, we, we kind of, do we buy down two thousand and seven bonds? Again, it all depends upon how well.
Another decision that can't be made yet.
Yeah, exactly right. But, but it is one, and thank you for asking.
I asked that question now, I understand this much better.
Right, I agree. So I, I admit, it's, it's one of those more, more legal components. It's, it's, it's not a USDA provision, it's actually the provision that we are providing the general obligation pledge.
Yes, it's state statute.
Yep. So Mr. Riggs and his colleagues at Kennedy and Graven, they're, they've worked with me on, they've, you've spent that extra three dollars an hour on some additional review.
I think that falls under a different category. Might start with a two per hour, but.
But, but no, Mayor, Mayor, that's the long story, I realize, a long answer to your question about sizing and getting the, the maximum principal interest and that, so. So interim interest I wanted to talk about tonight, again, that's the construction period financing. And then second was just that moving target, like I say, and that's, that's all based upon how well your construction is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
So the next thing on the agenda here then, new business, which leads off with Doug's request that council recite the pledge of allegiance before council meeting. Not being a big fan of rituals, I don't see that it really adds much to our meetings. I think it's things that are covered under our oath of office, but I have no objection to it either.
I think under Robert's rules, it's, I believe it's a requirement.
Yes, Scott, I mean, a lot of cities do it, but it's basically a local.
It is, it's, it's a local jurisdiction kind of decision. Even from the cities that I deal with, I can say it's slightly less than half don't do it.
Less than half?
Yeah, well, like, slightly less than half do do it, but, sorry, I did it wrong there. Use two negatives. It, it's less than half that actually have the pledge for the, the meeting. So it's, you know, I, it depends. So it's, you know, I, I, it depends on the immunity, it's up to the, the council to decide. I don't think it's driven by anything rule-wise, it's just a council procedure, whether or not councils.
I see nothing wrong with it. I don't, I don't have an objection. It, I don't, I, I know some councils do it. Some county commissions do it.
So we all turn around and face the plate when we have.
We did it properly, yes.
It's at the beginning of the meeting before. Big start. And I've had three cities, two of them have done it and one hasn't, but again, it's.
I guess.
At least on, you know.
Or you call a meeting to order, wouldn't it?
Yeah, we follow. You bring the meeting to order and then do the pledge of allegiance, and that includes your, your citizens. We do it, sit down, go and work business.
Richard, comment? Not really. I can go toward it or not.
As I said, I don't see they're making real sizable difference one way or the other since the oath of office covers the same things.
Well, it's, it's also giving back to what our forefathers brought forth to have the country that we live in and that we have the opportunity to have the government that we have today. And that it's giving back. And it's also for ourselves that we ourselves pledge to our country.
Showing respect.
Yes.
I would move that we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So next meeting, that will be part of the.
For agenda, correct.
I think we've all probably done it, and more than enough time, I know.
Yeah, I probably forget the words.
Well, you know, it'll be like singing hymns. If you fluff something, everybody else covers for you and no one notices anyway.
Yeah, the teacher's mom from the.
So we come to the discussing issues of waste management, residential solid waste picker, 2016 refused license renewal and possible further actions under the contract.
First thing I'm gonna say is, before we get into this, myself and everybody in our office does not take this, what we're gonna talk about lightly here. We're not just doing this on a limb. And we've made numerous attempts to work with these guys, and I want to just say this right away, I don't take this lightly. I mean, we would normally, at all costs, try to work out, you know, with parties we have contracts with. We try to work with them to work things out, and I really strongly put a lot into that. So it's not like I normally just play off and say, well, we gotta do something. But this situation is really tenuous because we've had three years of just up and down with waste management, with the pickups and the routes. You know, generally speaking, a couple of times a month, there will be a missed pickup or multiple missed pickups. I mean, it's, it's certainly a monthly thing. The first year, and I think all of you probably heard different, from different people, when they first started, it was, it was fairly rough. And we, we tried to work with them and take into account that there's a, a long-term transition from a hauler to a large company, and that there was gonna be some issues, difficulties, some of it just with residents and some of it with them. You know, just anytime you have a large transition, when you've got 850 customers, there's gonna be bumps in the road.
And the system was changed from a portion of the city each day to.
Exactly.
A whole city all in one day.
Yes, and.
In the hope that that would help some of that.
They really had to work harder to get the same day pickup with our recycling, and we, we registered that, we understand that. But the problem is, it's now two years into this thing and we, we're continuing to see things that shouldn't be going on. Since probably November, when, I think you could tie this to the holidays, when there was obviously substitute drivers, people on vacation, et cetera, then you went from one or two again to, you know, areas or blocks or whatever that were missed, that, you know, maybe, I don't know, 10, 12 customers one week, maybe another week, two or three, another week, six or eight, it kind of was. But I said, and I told them this back during the summer, if things don't get better, I'm gonna bring this back to council to discuss. That's what I said and that's what I'm doing now. And so this is a, it's a tenuous thing because making a change is not an easy thing because you've got the, the roll off, the, the, the things that, you know, gross had, that waste management bought, you know, containers. And so I'm, I'm guessing, educated guess wise, that if a new company comes in, they're gonna have to buy, they're gonna have to bring in new containers. It's gonna take them probably four to six weeks, maybe longer, but probably somewhere in there to order that many. I mean, waste management's company is big enough to come in and have that many, but most smaller haulers don't have that. And this, this doesn't make or break the change in it, but this is just a logistic thing that, you know, I wanna discuss with, with you. And, you know, our, so I mean, I don't, I just want to stress, we're not taking this lightly. I mean, we've tried working hard for quite a while. And so it's a situation that I could sit here and look at you guys, and if, if we had, if we met with them and they said, well, we're gonna do steps for this or that to improve things, I would have a hard time, you know, really thinking that's gonna happen. Because they've told us repeatedly that they've taken steps to make sure that all of the customers are picked up, GPS on their trucks. So all the addresses for the residents and all the pickup points shouldn't be an issue. That, that's why we have a hard time with this. We've also had problems, and this isn't recent, but last year, or I mean, '13 into '14, where people called in and waste management said, well, we don't serve any. We also had, I, I want to say three times where they called us about past due accounts, you know, where the city pays them every month, we collect all the bill, and they called us and said, well, we're overdue with it. And we're like, what are you talking about? We're not overdue, we don't have that kind of setup. We pay you what we collect, it says that in the contract. And I never got any of those calls, I was kind of waiting for that because I kind of had my response practiced on that. It's just, you know, all these things that it's like, I, I think you talk to residents and a lot of residents maybe now feel like, okay, they're getting picked up, but I don't think they're real, they, they just have a very good reputation. I don't want to say happy or unhappy because that depends on the week and if people are picked up. I mean, most of the time people get picked up, but they're just, I've seen enough of this pattern now, people calling saying they weren't picked up again. So I'm bringing this up because I think it's a problem, and so Scott, I don't know if you have anything to.
No, I, I think you've covered it, Mark, and I think Mark's memorandum, it's, the council covers it as well in that description. You have a, a lot of abilities and that's how the contract was set up. It is a license, it's granted by the city council, our code follows what's in state statute, and the agreement itself follows exactly what we have in our code as well as state statute. So it's pretty straightforward. You have that ability, there is the clause that Mark cites there on termination or replication, and if council makes that determination, it can move in that direction if that's the council's desire.
I have a question for you, Scott.
Okay.
Is there anything, I don't remember, but you're much better at reading every line of a contract than I, if there is nothing in there that prevents us from seeking proposals from other haulers at any time?
Absolutely not, and that's, that's the way we set it up, and that's the way the ordinance is as well, and it has been for many years.